Evening, everyone. If you'd please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands.
I'd like to observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Frederick Powers, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. David Gardner, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Barbara Jean Solomon, graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. David Boelk, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Carol Bailey, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening, so I'll read them both and then we can go up and honor anyone who's here. Throughout our school buildings, school resource officers and school patrol officers play a vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and school communities. They have embraced this critical responsibility with dedication, professionalism, and care. The SROs and SPOs of the North Syracuse Central School District are committed professionals who exemplify the highest standards of service and integrity. Their presence fosters positive relationships, promotes a secure learning environment, and provides valuable guidance to students and staff. The Board of Education, along with students, parents, administrators, and community members, recognize and appreciate their unwavering efforts to protect and support our schools. To honor the school resource officers and school patrol officers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their contributions, I, Michael Marizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as School Resource Officer and School Patrol Officer Appreciation Day to be recognized with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion for that declaration? Mr. Crabtree, second from Xavier, any questions or comments? All those in favor, that's unanimous, and congratulations, thank you for all you do. The second proclamation we have this evening is for our athletic trainers. Throughout our school buildings, athletic trainers have an impact on the district's student athletes. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The athletic trainers of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure safety of student athletes. To honor the athletic trainers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Marizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, as Athletic Trainer Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion for that proclamation? Paul and Josh, any questions or comments? All in favor? Congratulations and thank you to those. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. First one looks like a fun one, our first LEGO League program and challenge. So I would like to welcome Brian up to kind of give us a rundown of how this went. Welcome. Either one works, you can stand if you want to stand. Got to push them.
There we go, sorry about that. This is our first participation in this. I was asked to do this in October, I was given authorization to do it in October. Our first meeting to get teams together was November seventh. The competition was January eleventh. And the competition requires a research project, putting together robots, programming robots to do about fifteen different tasks. And, well, we have some videos, we'll show, video will show you in a minute. It was a daunting task. We had one meeting a week planned, which gave us seven meetings before the competition, which is about seven hours to do all that. So being the first meeting, the first time doing this, we had to pick and select what we did. So we focused mainly on designing and building a robot, programming the robot to do as many tasks as we could. And how did that go?
It was, it was hard to do.
We also threw together teams. We, we had twenty-four people to come together, ended up with fourteen, two teams of seven, that some of them were friends, some of them didn't know each other. So we had two teams of seven, trying to figure out how to get things to work, how to program a robot in seven hours. And they were unbelievable, the actual experience of this. I've been dying to do something like this for years, and I'm really glad North Syracuse came through and did this and gave this opportunity for the kids. As you can see, they all were quite happy with it. Program was, if you want to go ahead into the presentation, those were the fourteen, we had two teams, Sonic Drivers and Transformers. We had fourteen on the team, but only three had to drop, couldn't make it on Saturdays because of prior commitments. So those were the eleven that went. The competition has a theme, this year was submerged, underwater. They went through all this research and we chose to only do the robots because we didn't have time or the personnel to really spend time doing the research. They were supposed to, you know, take some water, the issue with the oceans, try to research what was wrong with it and try to come up with a solution for it, as well as doing the programming and the robot part. We forego the research because we haven't had the time. Right, so the challenge, they have a game board, and the game board has fifteen different LEGO tasks to do. I think it was about fifteen. And they picked which ones they do, they had to program the robot, and the robot had to run autonomously. Give them a demonstration of what that means. This is one of the, this was his robot. And you had two and a half minutes to do as many of these different tasks as you could. And it had to come, it could go out, come back to the area where they were, where they ran it, but if they took it off the board before it came back to the area, they lost points. But all the different tasks they did gained them points. Okay? A part of the students is the two competitions they participate in with the robot. They had two minutes and thirty seconds to complete all the tasks on the playing field. They managed to get a hundred points each time. The highest score for the highest performing team was a bunch of eighth graders, they had two hundred and thirty-four points. So the fact that they had produced a robot, made it run, programmed it, and I'll tell you, we got there, we were not aware that you couldn't have it linked to the computer, download the program, and had it run. And so we had to go back, learn, figure out how to download the different programs onto the CPU and get it to run. And they went back after our first warm-up session, and they did all this. And they were still able to do, I mean, they were just thinking on the spot, working together. It was really, really awesome to watch. Okay, next slide. Okay, we had four, okay, we can skip that. Okay, here's a picture of the board. You had four, you had seven members on the team, up to, you could have up to ten members on the team, and the kids had to stay in each of the corners. The white corners is where you could touch and move the robot. And that's where you pushed the program and the robot would run out from there, do a task, and come back. Okay, next slide. All right, and you can see they're all having a. And you had two officials watching and judging the points, deciding who gets points or not, if you lost points. And if you had to pick up the robot and bring it back, they were red discs, you'll see them by the one judge, they're red discs there. You lost the disc every time, and if you lost all five discs, you had to stop. Here's Addison. Okay, and I think the next slide will be the video. There, there we go. There's the robot running. Knocked the squid off, that was one, that got points for that, came back, and they tried to line it up for what they wanted to do next. I think they were trying to get it to run to the next side. Pressed the wrong button. Little, it was learning, and this was, the thing is, this was their first time doing it. And so there's a learning curve. And so they got a great experience, and that's mainly why I agreed to do this, is because it was a great opportunity, they could see everything that was required. And most of the people there were fifth graders. We had one sixth grade, one seventh grader, Lucas, was a three six, three sixth graders, and the rest were fifth graders. So we have a good core moving forward for next year. And I'm trying to pull, I'm going to open up and try to pull more people in this, for the rest of this year, to get them in and start being a part of this so they can learn from it, so we're better prepared to advance for next year. Next year, if they set the, challenges are released in August. So by September, we, all the coaches could be well informed about what needs to be done and ready to go. So when school gets started and the buses, late buses start running, they can start running at the end of September, beginning of October. And hopefully, I, we do have a possibility of a second coach in my building, we only had myself. So we're looking forward to moving on with this. Anything else you want to add? Did you have fun?
Yeah, I had to think stream, it was extremely fun.
What was the best part?
You got to, like, play around with different codes and different building techniques. And a few worked, a few didn't, and so you just messed around with it. And we just messed around with it a lot, and we got this to work.
It's a, it's a good opportunity, working together, learning how to team ship. It's a way to get kids involved in the team activity that's not, aren't so much sports oriented. Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight.
Thank you. Before you, before you go, I, Paul, go ahead.
I just want to know, were you an Eagles fan, or did you just buy that hoodie?
I saw him when he came in this morning, I saw the red hair, I said, oh, chief, sorry about that. Then I looked down, I said, oh, wait a second, my bad.
I just want, Brian and I go long ways back, when I was at Bear Road, and I knew back then you were going to be a special teacher. I really knew that. And you have done a lot with technology the last three or four years. We will miss you. You're retiring, you deserve it, but thanks for all that you did for our school district.
And real quick, I just had a quick question. Were the students from both middle schools, or was it just?
Our school was the only one that was able to put together two teams that felt comfortable with going. My background is, my son was on the first robotics at Liverpool, which is the high school level where they build and construct the robots and everything. So I had been through what he had been through. So I kind of knew what to expect, and when I started looking in the competition for the first LEGO and saw that the way it ran was similar, but there were still a lot of nuances that I was not familiar with. And two months wasn't really enough time to really get truly prepared for it. But it's been a great experience to learn how it's run and be a part of it and know what to do next year. And so even though I'm retiring, I'm going to help the person who takes over. There's, we have a person that said that they're interested, I'm going to work with her this summer, or this, rest of the school year to get her up to snuff. And if she needs any assistance, I'll volunteer for her next year.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. All right.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to welcome Julie, Sarah, and Katie up for our Special Ed Program and Services presentation. Welcome.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having us, I'm Julie Darmody, I'm one of the Directors of Special Education.
I'm Katie Reeve, another Special Education Director.
And I'm Sarah Keys, the other Director of Special Ed.
There are no more of us.
We do have a slideshow up on the board, just to guide us through our discussion tonight. So we'll just be talking to you about four of our main agenda items tonight. Our focus for this school year in our department, up there, the state performance plan, our professional learning opportunities that we provided this year, our continuum planning, and then we'd like to talk a little bit about classification rates over the last five or six years. So this year, the state has identified North Syracuse as one of the districts across the state that is being asked to participate in the parent involvement survey. This happens every seven years or so for every district. SUNY Potsdam actually puts together the survey, and they compile all the data results, and then they'll provide it to us sometime in two thousand twenty-six. It's a simple survey, like you'd expect to see. It's twenty-five multiple choice questions. Families can answer it either on a paper survey or electronically if they have the code that goes with their survey. And the survey just identifies how well school districts are doing with improving services and results for students with disabilities by engaging parents in the process. That's the main focus of the survey, and the questions that are asked is how much parents are involved in that process. We are working with NSCEP, and we're currently forty percent complete toward our target goal of completed surveys. And we do have a plan for completing all the surveys during annual reviews. Our buildings have graciously agreed to collaborate with us, and will have space, as families are waiting for their meetings, to either complete the surveys on paper, or complete them on their phone, or on a tablet while they're waiting. So we are very confident that we're going to come in well ahead of our deadline, which is August, to reach our one hundred percent goal.
Okay, are you guys going to hear me, okay? Right, so I want to do the slide because I'm super proud of the professional development we've been, we established as we came together as a crew, specially designed instruction, and I think that has been super impactful because it's coming here in-house and meeting the needs of our teachers. And I know we got really great feedback about that, and we've cycled through a lot of teachers, and we started last summer, and then we continue to offer it on our superintendent's conference days, trauma-informed practices, CERT to CSE, we do have a lot of new special education teachers, which go along, goes, follows right through with the IEP writing, the Wyatt four training, so that helps our special ed teachers run the academic testing for when we're doing evaluations, the Laxia power-up, so all our research-based reading interventions, we are constantly running those, and then the teach training with BOSI's.
Another initiative that we have going this year is, prior to our budget season, we came together with stakeholders across our continuum. CTD blended, our special classes, related services, teachers, gen ed teachers, special ed teachers, all came together to talk about some of the strengths and challenges that are associated with our current continuum and the programming that we offer to students with disabilities within the district. We hope to gain insight regarding our student needs and our presentation within the current continuum so that we could continue to plan for professional development that our staff need in order to meet student needs, and so that we could analyze the needs going into our budget recommendations to make sure that our continuum is comprehensive and meeting the needs of our current students. So that occurred, our first session occurred on January thirteenth. It was here at the DO, Mr. Carrillo was with us, and I thank him for collaborating with us on that. If you have any questions, just let us know.
Okay, so we just thought that it would be important to show this because I know this is not something that we've analyzed, you know, with the board before, but we, here's just some trends in our classification rates for the past few years. Yeah, the preschool.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this is school age. You know, we have, we have noted the upward trend too, you know, we have, you know, these are COVID babies coming through. You know, the acuity of the kids that are coming into school too has definitely increased. And we're looking too to see that we've recently adopted some tier-one curriculum, you know, for example, the CP La, and so we're looking too to look at the effects of that too in our instruction.
Our MTSS model will continue to support as many students as possible within general education. So next steps, moving forward, we are currently analyzing information that we have from projections for next year, all of the information that we got from our listening sessions. We're doing a lot of planning for our continuum and looking to make some strong budget recommendations for moving forward for next year.
I have a couple comments to make, if that's okay. Thanks, Paul. So first of all, I've done your jobs before, and it's not easy, and it's certainly not. My, some of, some of my concerns, and this isn't just a North Syracuse, this is something, I mean, I come with the background of a special education teacher, a principal, a director of special education, and I can't even think of how many hats between here and there that I, that I've worn. But, and I also come from a family where I was raised with some children with special needs. So, you know, that having the focus on the child with the special needs, but also looking at what's best for the child with special needs within a general education setting. So I'm seeing trends of not only in my own professional life, obviously, I'm seeing it at North Syracuse. I meet periodically throughout the county, as you do meet with other special ed directors throughout the county, I meet with principals. There is a growing trend, one, the numbers, okay? So you are not out of line with the classification. This is, this is a trend, it's not just a North Syracuse thing. But I'm seeing a growing trend of kids with emotional issues. And I'm seeing a trend also of programs overusing consultant teacher direct. I know our goal is to have the child in the general ed setting as much as possible. But I'm also finding that a child with, and if you look at research, you know, a child who has, you know, disabilities is in a classroom and has someone helping them, that's great, that's where the research is on inclusion. But you don't often see research with kids with severe emotional disabilities. Whether they're being identified, or they're about to be identified, you could use common sense and go, whoa, that is beyond what a regular classroom can. I'm seeing the effects of other kids. I'm seeing kids who might have slight anxiety and not being able to be, or having trouble cope within their classrooms. I'm seeing staff burnout at high rates, and not only is it like they get physical abuse, but it's a psychological abuse. I'll tell you, when I'm with a day with a student that is highly dysregulated, and I'm talking five or six years old. I used to work in the city breaking up gang fights as an administrator, and, I mean, this is, hurts my soul even more so. So my concern is that there's staff that are not properly supported. And this is about the kids, it's about the staff, you support your staff, you're supporting your kids. But these kids aren't getting what they need within a general education classroom. I just, I, it's, it's beyond just a North Syracuse thing, but it is a North Syracuse, and I think we need to be really mindful of that.
Yeah, there's a couple different things that we're seeing right now, and like you said, across, not just North Syracuse, but is the acuity of needs for kids with social emotional, high social emotional needs, mental health concerns, but also, we're, on a separate note, kids with levels of autism that can be challenging to support within general education. So that's something that we're looking at pretty closely as we're analyzing the information that we currently have. You know, we can talk a little bit, Julie might want to talk a little bit about the numbers of kids that we have in BOSI's and what that referral process looks like. But we certainly are aware of some of the acuity of need that we're seeing coming in in different areas, and hopeful to be able to plan some different things within our own continuum to support them.
And BOSI's is full. And so, especially the programs with the, there's a waitlist with the kids who have. And so especially the programs with the, there's a waitlist with the kids who have, you know, high, high needs that are often violent or very emotional, disruptive, dysregulated. And as I said, we don't have the resources within public education to, to support them properly. So my worry is that these kids aren't going to get better. And then we are burning out staff. I, I could tell you as, as working, being in your shoes, the best thing you could do is support your staff and empathize with them because it is not easy. I go right in with teachers while a child is dysregulated. And I'm, I'm inside dysregulated at the end of the day. My soul hurts. It's, it's not easy. And I, I don't know, I'm sitting on this board hoping to make some difference because it's not making sense to me, what's happening in education. It's not. And I don't know what collectively we could do, but I know special education is a key part of this. And we need to do better by our kids. We need to support our staff more.
I just, I wanted to look at the graph again. Just to get an idea. I was getting confused. Well, we have declining enrollment and an increased percentage, so cause and effect there. I guess I just wondered the numbers. And if you don't have the numbers, it's the numbers of identified students as opposed of the percentage, because the declining enrollment, obviously we'd make the percentage.
Right, yeah.
Are we seeing more, just, just generally?
Well, I know last year, we, you know, over the course of a school year, and, you know, we're, we're all kind of new in the office, but over the course of a school year, apparently we averaged 90 to 100 new entrants from start to finish, just with students that have been identified. Last year, by December, we were close to 90 with new entrants with IEPs. Significant.
And looking at that data also, Paul, we saw that about 20% of those students that came, that were new entrance to North Syracuse, and they, they come from the four winds. There's not one place that we could point to, to say, this is where they're all flooding through our gates. About 20% of those children required special class placement, meaning one of our, you know, more restrictive placements. So the need coming in is, is pretty acute. And we also made many referrals out to BOSI's from those new entrants. Some of the kids were already in BOSI's programs, they just switched districts, so they just stayed in their BOSI's program. But some of the kids came in and, you know, were either in the process of a BOSI's referral or as soon as they got here, we realized they needed a BOSI's referral because we couldn't program for them. So I would say about 20% of our new entrants, both last year and this year, were at that acuity level. You're welcome.
How is it decided when a student, and I know, I don't know enough about the 611 program that you guys are starting?
613.
613, okay. Could you tell me the profile of a child that's, that's in a 613?
Yeah, so the 613 profile is for students with level three autism who have significant strengths in nonverbal communication. In other words, most of them are device users and are not yet speaking. They also have pretty significant adaptive needs. Some of them may have feeding and toileting needs. And many of them have some behaviors that can be challenging that are often associated with level three autism.
How do you decide, and I don't even know, Bob, if BOSI's has a 613, but we have programs, and I asked this a couple meetings ago, we have programs like a 1214 program, so does BOSI's. We have an 811 program, so does BOSI's. So what is that decision of, not that we have BOSI's openings right now, but saying this, we, we can't, this child needs more, even though it's an 811 and an 811? I, I know from straight observation, BOSI's is more supportive than within a general building.
So in terms of our 1213 plus one friends at BOSI's who are in the skate program, so 1213 plus one can mean lots of different things. But our BOSI's counterpart, like what would be comparable would be a 1213 plus one in the skate program to our 613. So our 613 program is actually a smaller ratio that provides more individualized support than a 1213 plus one at BOSI's would. So we can really provide some intensive wraparound programming there, just because our ratio is smaller, if that makes sense.
Good job, thank you.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you want to speak to how we make the...
For any program?
For any program, but I know right now ours, the parallel of the 811 and the 1214, like you're saying like, oh, we're in an 81, we're in an 811, but we're not able to meet this child's needs. Now we're going to refer out to BOSI's, even though it's the same program. I, I don't know, BOSI's just has more support within their 811.
BOSI's, yeah, BOSI's has wall-to-wall therapeutic, a wall-to-wall therapeutic approach where everyone is highly trained and has specific, a specific approach that everyone is using. And unfortunately, and fortunately at the same time, there's not a gen ed component in their center-based programming for 811. So they can meet the kids' needs, they can be more flexible, they have lots of sensory spaces to meet their, the needs of kids who are neurodivergent and are exhibiting behaviors related to that. You know, they have a higher level of social work support and just sort of wraparound community engagement with, with those needs.
And we make a decision? 111s? And then there's a center base. So when students aren't successful within the, a center-based program, we look at BIP data, we look at referral data, those are all CERT decisions and then their CSE decisions. They can be kind of complex at times. It's often very, very, very helpful to have parental agreement with a placement chain. Recommend if a parent doesn't sign. So it's pretty complex and it's really, really multi.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, we have no comments from the audience this evening, but as always, we encourage you to sign up if you have anything you'd like to share with the board. Board of Education Committee reports. Mark, do we have anything new? No, Mr. Crabtree?
Legislative committee met this past Wednesday and I thought it was a really good meeting in that we had a state representative here from the governor's office, who will now be joining our committee every, every month, along with our legislators. And she took some really good notes, so she'll go back to the governor's people and, and talk about it. I want to thank Mr. Keegan and Mr. Ward, Dr. Ward, excuse me, for their presentation and talking about beginning of our budget and some of the concerns we have. I'm going to wait until we get to the Board of Education comments because I think Paul and some others would like to talk about the Capitol Conference and also Center New York School Boards Association. So I'll wait till later.
Dr. Ward?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to mention a couple of things this week. First, I just want everyone to know and be aware that we're going to go out for an RFP, for a, someone to help us with a utilization study. And really, the, the purpose for the utilization study is multifaceted, but two of the main purposes or main goals is to help us create a long-term construction plan. Some of our neighboring districts have put out construction plans up to 10 years and we think that that's the direction we would, we would like to head. And also to, also to look at our long-term great configuration and whether that's something that we need to address as well. So the utilization study is what we're calling it and a RFP for people to look at and, and respond to us. So more to come on that. Request for proposal is RFP, thank you, Matt, about the utilization study. So I do want to thank our SROs. Thank you very much for attending this evening. They, they really do keep us safe and not only they keep us safe every day, but really the social, emotional piece that they add to, you know, helping kids every day in our buildings is really just awesome to see. And so, again, so thank you and please thank all of our SROs for that. I want to thank our, our board members. I'm going to brag a little bit about North Syracuse board members here because we had the largest presence at our legislative session. We barely fit at one table. And so that just showed also, Dr. Leahy was able to join us and Ms. Ryan was able to join us. So, so that's something I just thought that was super proud to be there with all of you. And we are wearing red this evening. No, we didn't change our school colors, but we're wearing red this evening because two Fabius Pompe students passed away, I think. It's been more than a week now driving to school. And we just thought to show our support to Fabius Pompe, to wear their school colors. And, you know, just of note to, for board members, you know, their mom is a board member in Fabius Pompe, so we thought tonight was, was the night that we should wear red. So thank you all here for, for wearing red to show our support. And that is all I had for this evening.
Board of Education comments?
I have some.
Go for it.
I can start. Just as Bob referenced, the key, when he mentioned the Capitol Conference, that's a NISBA, New York State School Boards Association-sponsored event that, that was Friday. It was a Zoom for a couple hours. Really, I'll try and condense this all into a couple of opinionated statements. We had that, we had the good, as, as Dr. Ward said, good presence at the BOSI's sponsored, well, sponsored by Center New York School Boards, hosted by BOSI's with the legislators. I keep hearing similar message and, and one thing that concerns me is, I've heard it both times now, is that legislators are pleased where they're starting, where we're starting compared to last year. And we here in North Syracuse are not very pleased where we're starting. So I think we got a, kind of a tough road ahead of us here, given that. And as much as we have two pieces of the foundation formula to change based upon the Rockefeller Institute recommendations, we're back where we always are, which is, we have a governor's budget, we're waiting for the one house bill from each piece of the legislator, legislative branches. And our presence in talking to these legislators is, I can't stress that enough. So we did see them Saturday. We, I will be seeing some Wednesday, I'll talk about that in a second, but you're putting something together for some of our legislative committee where we can bring students, which I think will be very powerful. I think we have to just be present in front of them as much as possible because I think this is, you know, we've been looking at the sky almost falling for the last couple of years and then something stops it. And I'm, I'm kind of worried right now, kind of a lot. I happen to be going to Albany Wednesday anyway, and so the NISBA hosts a lobby day. So I'm going to go a little bit early. I'm going to meet with Xavier here and his boss, hopefully, on Wednesday and, and Chris Ryan. And so I'm going to bring some of the talking points that Don shared with me and just put that in front of them and have a casual, pleasant conversation. But I do want to stress that, you know, we, we got hit by the, hurt by the foundation formula, and you explained to me that we're just in the wrong place right now with the loss of student enrollment, we just saw in that graph from special ed. And so the calculation wasn't very favorable for us and we find ourselves in the save harmless world. So I'll stop there.
I may. I have slightly cheerier news. This past week at Class A Boys Sectionals for diving, I want to send out congratulations to Carter Canastra for making the state meet, as well as Nate Ornofsky for not only making the state, the state meet for the second time this season, but for also setting a school record, so.
Yes, so I wanted to just touch a little bit on the conference as well. One of the things that came up was special ed funding. And I know that there's been a conversation, and I know, Dr. Ward, you talked to Assembly Minister P about this as well, but there definitely is going to be an emphasis on increasing aid for special ed this year in the state budget. We need to make sure that we're on top of that as well. Because one of the pieces that Dr. Tim's there kept going back to was how even though our districts like us where we have a huge enrollment decline, things are actually more expensive because, you know, in the last five years, what did we say, 50 students? There's, there's an additional 50 students that have IEPs. And we just need to really make sure that that data is available when we're talking to legislators because that's going to be the biggest thing to show them is, hey, even though our enrollment is down, our, our costs are increasing a lot. And of course, the, you know, the cost of living is continuing to skyrocket, even though it was supposed to all go down by now. So anyway, I'll leave it at that.
All right, yeah, I'm going to step in, just, I'm, my concerns are with you, Paul. Thank you for going. I know you were going to be there already, but I appreciate you going there. Take good notes, please. Okay? And I would love to be able to join you someday, but at this point in time, I can't.
I just stressed that I was going to be there already because I want you to know I'm passing the savings on here to the school.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Not making a special trip.
And, and lighten the mood a little bit. I didn't want to put our, our guests on the spot, but does anybody on the board know what LEGO stands for?
Something Swedish.
Yeah, well.
No, okay. I tried.
It's, it's play well.
Okay, how?
That's it, play well. That's what it's, that's what it's defined as, yes.
I'll Google that later.
I, I happened to just, I read it in some, some article like three weeks ago, it stuck in my head. Yeah, yeah, LEGO means play well. Just thought I'd throw it out there, lighten the mood.
All right, going along with Mark, there was a few other athletic accomplishments I'd like to highlight. First off, we have the CNS Boys and Girls Indoor Track Team. They both won sectionals a couple days ago. And then individual accomplishments, you had Anna Eels, Ellis, or Eels, excuse me, Els? Oh, there's a typo, apologize. Congratulations to Anna for winning a section three title in triple jump and high jump. We have Cameron Ingram, who won two sectional titles in 55 meters and 55 meter hurdles. I believe he also set a couple state records and he was sixth in the country in 55 meter hurdles as well. It feels like every few years we have one of those track stars that just blows us away. They're doing some great things on the track team as always. Then we have Jaden Mackey, then she won a section two title in 55 meters. And then lastly, we have Matt Freeman, who won triple jump as for sectionals. And then on the varsity and JV CNS cheerleading, they both placed first at today's, or, excuse me, a couple days ago, Chit Dango Snowman Showdown with the highest score of the day. So really good weekend for athletics across the board. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to start off by saying tomorrow, here at the district office, the Committee on Special Education is going to be having a family engagement night at 5:00 PM. I also wanted to kind of recognize the Human Rights Club at CNAS High School for their initiative. Right now, we are... Right now, we are auctioning off a basket, and we're going to be donating it to a humanitarian organization, along with a foundation called the Namie Foundation, which is going to be providing bikes for teachers in Africa because Jaclyn Hayman, a club advisor, who's also on this district's human rights committee, is going to be visiting Africa over, I believe it's February break, and she's going to be there providing an all-girls school in Africa with just like sanitary products, along with, you know, hopefully some bikes for teachers as they have to travel, like they have to walk like four miles to school every single day, like to and from. So that's an amazing initiative that I wanted to shout out, and if you are interested in personally purchasing a ticket, you can just talk to me, and I can give you the prices and kind of go over everything. And lastly, I wanted to say, Friday, Principal's Cabinet, we put together Hearts and Hoops for Hunger. All the proceeds are going to go to the food pantry, and it's humongous game against Liverpool for the boys and girls. I wanted to say good luck to the boys and girls, and I hope all of you guys can attend and show support to our North Stars. And thank you.
Moving into some routine action items, consideration for the approval of a minutes from January 27th. Do I have a motion to put that before us? Mark and Josh, any questions or comments? All in favor? That is. I'll place B and C together, the consideration of the classification of school placement for disabled students. Do I have a motion to place B and C together? Beth and Amanda, any questions or comments? All those in favor? And declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus. Do I have a motion to place that before us? All, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Moving into discussion action, action items, recommendation to approve the amendment to the lease agreement between St. Margaret's Church and the North Syracuse Central School District. Don, I don't know if you want to just briefly. So let's, yeah, yeah. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Josh and Amanda, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Nomination of the Honorable Corolla Madison BOSEs board member. This recommendation is to nominate Mr. Crabtree for another term from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2028, and to notify OCMBOSEs of our nomination. Motion to place that. Josh, Beth, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Thank this board for your support. OCMBOSEs means a lot to me personally, all the programs that we have, and the support of superintendent in this board. We have the most students that are in, in the program, whether it's a welder, innovation tech, star program. We are such a supporter of BOSEs, so I thank you.
Recommendation to approve a memorandum of agreement between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Association of Mental Managers. Do I have a motion to, Mark and Josh, any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Acknowledgement of gifts, Justin Ferguson has donated $546.90 to the North Syracuse Early Education Program, and an anonymous donor has donated a gift of $3,042 to the district for use at Roxborough Road Elementary School. So thank you for those gifts. Do I have a motion to accept with gratitude those mentioned gifts? Mark and Beth, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Motion to reject the CNS pool construction bids in excess of budget. Don, just real quick, if you don't.
The market has been very challenging, and we once again have received bids that exceed our budget. We've met with our architects and our construction managers, they're reworking the specifications, and we'll be meeting with potential bidders to explain those specs in hopes that we can rebid within the next month and get more attractive bids that are more consistent with our budget.
Do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth, any questions or comments? That's unanimous. Recommendation to approve a memorandum of agreement between the North Syracuse Central School District and the Teamsters Local 317. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth, second from Mark, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, no. Next, we have a recommendation to approve a memorandum of agreement between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Education Association. Recommendation to place that before us. Paul, second from Xavier. Comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And before we move into personnel, I have a couple of retirements I'd like to acknowledge. Susan McCloskey is a teaching assistant retiring with 43 years of service, and Belinda Testmer is retiring, is a retiring teaching assistant retiring with 20 years of service. So as always, we'd like to say congratulations and wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement. We need an executive session before we move into personnel. Do I have a motion to accept Personnel A as submitted? Xavier and Mark, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. And support staff, personally, do I have a motion to accept that as submitted? Beth and Amanda, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And we have no executive session tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second from Xavier, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and we're adjourned. Thank you.